I will call this meeting of Tuesday, May 19th, Fridley School Board Meeting to order. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to read a statement outlining the circumstances for the meeting. So due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Fridley ISD-14 school district is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes 13D point 021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member or the superintendent to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. Citizens who would like to address the board on a topic on the meeting agenda may email the Fridley School Board at schoolboard@fridley.k12.mn.us prior to the meeting. Please include your full name and the agenda item you wish to speak and ask your and your question or comment on the agenda item. School Board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking, and school board members wishing to speak should state their name then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, then mute again. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting, and when voting, state their last name and yes or no. This meeting is being recorded, and access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as is reasonably possible. So with that, we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the May 19th meeting?
Approve.
Please state your last name.
Thornton.
Approve.
Adam Second.
Motion by Thornton, seconded by Adam. We will do the vote by roll call. Adam?
Adam, yes.
Delvo, yes. Carrido?
Carrido, yes.
Carnop?
Carnop, aye.
Stark?
Stark, yes.
Thornton?
Thornton, yes.
The agenda is approved. And we'll have spotlight on recognition, and Dr. Heil, if you could share that with us.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Delvo and school board members. I am pleased today to state Employee of the Month. Employee of the Month for the month of May is Nick Fletcher. Nick Fletcher is our Systems Administrator at Fridley Public Schools. At Fridley Public Schools, we are very fortunate to have Nick as our Systems Administrator. Nick takes care of all of our infrastructure and behind-the-scenes systems that are essential to our day-to-day operation. He ensures that we have systems up and running that make it possible for us to do our jobs and teach our students every day. He is also a mentor for the Technology Department staff, assures his knowledge and expertise in order for them to grow more skilled at their jobs. He is always willing to assist and support in our staff and students as well. Nick is a team player and has strong collaborative skills that are essential for the execution of the many technical projects that are done for the district. For each project or task, he understands the importance of planning, testing, and implementation in order for the project to be successful. He is always thinking the needs of the student and the staff in order to provide them with the best possible experience. And that was written by his supervisor, Yvonne Anderson, Director of Technology.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Heil, if you could share information about our retirees?
Yes, thank you. I am pleased to announce our 2019-20 retirees. We have Janice Anderson-Cory, who works in the speech language; Mary Jo Yuko, who is a special education teacher at Fridley Middle School; Laura Hagan, who was receptionist at Stevenson; we have Rachel M. Holt, teacher at Fridley High School; Janelle Jensen, Secretary to Director of Community Ed; James McDonald, the one and only coach and fire teacher at Fridley High School; Lynn Moquita, who is a pair professional; Lynn Phillips, who is a teacher at Haze; Barb Rohan, who is a pair professional; Margot Rothenbraker, who is a counselor at Haze; Kristy Sabby, who is a Tiger Club Coordinator; Sue Scarlett, who is a teacher at Stevenson; and the one and only Daryl Vosler, who is principal at Stevenson. So together, our staff that are retiring, they have a combined 301 years of service at Fridley Public School. We thank them for their service.
Thank you, Dr. Heil. Those are some heavy hitters we're losing. We wish them the best of luck and thank them for the years and years of service they have given to the Fridley School community. Dr. Heil, I'm going to invite you back again to share on Tigers United.
Thank you. We wanted, we have representatives today from our student representatives for the school board. We want to say thank you to our Tiger United representatives that have shown up for our board meetings this year. This was our first year with student representative, and these four young ladies have shown great representation of the student body at Fridley High School during this time. Three of them are seniors and will be graduating on June 4th, and one, we hope, will join us again for the 2020-21 school year to represent Fridley's students. We wish them the best of luck in their future endeavors and thank them for spending their time with the school board, with the Tigers United group supporting student voices that would otherwise go unheard. So thank you and congratulations to seniors class of 2020 for Instastar, Asanti, Coco, and the junior class of Magali. Would any of you ladies like to share anything? They are online.
Hi, it's Magali. I just wanted to say that I'm very thankful that I was able to be a part of this this year. It was my first year in Tigers United, and it's been really special to be combined with you guys and like learn a lot about the school board and just be involved with everything that goes on. And I've learned a lot, and I appreciate the dedication every single one of you guys have taken to make us a part of it.
Thank you, Magali.
Hi, guys. It's Instastar here. I just wanted to say thank you once again. It was an honor being a part of the school board, being representative for the students. I really enjoyed it. I was hoping we could, you know, saw each other a little bit longer, but unfortunately we couldn't. But I learned a lot from you guys, just from coming to the school board meetings and stuff, and I just want to say thank you for being a part of my senior year.
Thank you. Asanti or Coco?
Hi, this is Asanti. I just wanted to say that I'm really grateful for this opportunity, especially in my senior year. I've never had this, like, chance to show my voice and like tell people how I feel about things and like to actually be heard. So I feel like this was really important for all of us. It's a really big step in the entire district, I think, and I really hope that it can continue even after we all graduate.
Thank you, and thank you, Asanti. And Coco?
I don't think she's online.
Oh, okay. All right, so would any school board members like to share anything with our young student representatives?
Yeah, Adam here. I just really appreciate, you know, hearing the student voice. That's something very critical. They are our future leaders, and as seniors, we just want to thank them that they are special in many different ways. Their name and their time will be remembered in a way that no other seniors have been remembered. So even though you might feel you're losing out on major, you know, events and transition events, but at the same time, you are making history, and we are proud of you and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. I think this test is going to make you more resilient and more ready for life. So thank you for your service, and we thank you for your leadership.
Well said, Abdi. Well said.
I second that, Mr. Adam, as well. You guys have been remarkable, and I can't wait to see what you guys are going to accomplish. You know, it's been wonderful. It's been really wonderful having you guys be a part and share your voice, and you guys have just spoken up and shared your hearts. So the world is yours, so go out. We need all we can get right now for the future. Thank you so much, and the best to all of you.
And I hope that, you know, even though you're graduating, you're still a part of the Fridley community, and as you go to college or whatever it is that you have planned to still come back and visit and share ideas and the things that you learn in the world and whatever you might have to help make your school and your community a better place, just know that we're always here and eager to take your input and work with you because you really are going to define what this world looks like, and that's a big responsibility. But I have faith that you will do very, very well with that responsibility.
Yes, I also, of course, wanted to echo what everybody else said. You guys have been amazing, and I'm so glad you were able to join us, even though it was for only a short time. But we have so appreciated hearing from the students' perspective, and it gives us a better chance to do our job and just listen and soak in what you guys are going through and some of your ideas and perspectives. So we are so excited to see what's next for you guys. Thank you for your service, and we just wish you all the best.
In addition to what everyone else has said, thank you for stepping up, putting your hand up and stepping into this opportunity. That's a, that shows leadership and risk right there. And you already have evidence that you know how to lead through uncertainty. You have good evidence of finishing up your high school career in an uncertain time and still succeeding and ready to lead into the next phase of your life. So thank you again for your leadership, your time, and look forward to seeing what all you're going to bestow upon the world.
And I just wanted to make one more comment. We do have Magali for another year if she's interested, and hopefully for next year, maybe we can get some male counterparts to join us as well. But I do want our young, strong women to know that we did hear that there was a major concern around mental health, and we have not forgotten that. If anything, we become more aware of it, and that's something we will still be looking into support. So I just wanted to let them know we did hear their voice and their concern around mental health issues.
Yeah, I'm really interested. I'm looking forward for next year as a senior, next year. And our school has a lot of really positive people and people that want to change, and there's a lot of people that have a lot of great ideas that need their voices to be heard. So I'm definitely going to miss my other leaders next year, Asanti and Tisar and Coco. But they've really helped me develop my leadership skills and have set an example for me for next year, so I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you next year. Now, I have the honor of introducing, for the last time on his present, for the last time he'll be presenting on Stevenson Elementary, Principal Daryl Vosler, who's going to give us the presentation on what Stevenson achieved this year, and just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for your lifelong commitment to Fridley Schools. You have touched so, so many lives, and you deserve some time to rest and just take care of you, and you have left your mark, which we'll live on long beyond you. So thank you for that, and I welcome you to share your screen and start us off with the Stevenson presentation.
All right. Thank, thank you for those kind words. Yeah, they mean a lot. All right, while Mr. Weber pulls up my slideshow, I'll just let you know that we were scheduled to come in March with some students and teachers and maybe give you some firsthand look of some things that were going on at our school that maybe you didn't know about, but we've kind of put that into a slideshow, so that's part one. And then part two is basically telling you some of the things that are going on with this new distant learning. So it'll be pre-COVID-19 and post-COVID-19. But, all right, David, next slide, please. So these are some of the things we just wanted to show you that we are working to give our scholars in terms of their needs, some of the things that I'm going to show you here first. Next slide. First up is the, this, the loop that we have established here in our school is a pretty strong piece of identity in our school. We loop our students in second to third grade, which means they remain with the same teacher for two years, for second and third grade. And we've done this for four years now. The data coming out of the loop has been very strong. Our kids are growing. You can see some of the comments there. They, well, you know what? I'll stop and I'll let them tell you what they like about it. So here's a couple clips from some parents, a teacher, and some of our kids to tell you what they like about the loop.
Hi, I'm Lynn Peterson. I have a third and fourth grader here at Stevenson. Both have been in the loop, and we absolutely love it. I love how they seem to know their teachers, they know the rules, they feel more secure.
Hi, so my son went through the loop, and he's now a fourth grader. He went through second, third, and I have to say it was one of the coolest things I've ever experienced as a parent. I think probably one of the things that really, really blew me away was the deep, deep, deep relationships that happened between the students. Still, even now that they're not in the same classroom, these kids are still connected in fourth grade and really care about each other. There's a lot of thought and kindness that happens when you build that kind of relationship with one another, and I don't think that's easy to get.
My name is Gabriella, and I like the loop because you know your classroom and you know your classmates, so you don't have to worry as much.
Hi, my name is Maurice, and I like being in the same class because I get, I know all my friends, I know the rules, and my teacher's very nice.
Hi, my name is Steven, and I like being in the same class for two years because I don't need to practice making more friends.
I'm, hi, I'm Hal from Ms. Biedelman's class, and what I like about the loop is Ms. Biedelman because she gives us some, she gives us certain types of things like mindful tools and journals, and she really cares and that, and that we both, we all have something in our life.
Through my perspective as a teacher, looping allows me to build stronger, more resilient, thoughtful relationships with my students. In the second year, because I know my students academically and socially, teaching and learning can happen day one. Through my perspective, looping just makes sense.
So like I said, the loop has a really strong identity in our school. Another, you know, reading intervention I wanted to tell you about that goes on in kindergarten and first grade is called PALS, or Peer-Assisted Learning Systems. We use this with our kindergarten and first graders where the teacher models, the student then models, and then students practice. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see a clip of a practice session. You'll see a student practicing, and then you will see the girl next to him is the coach, and they both have roles. Go ahead. That's a, it's a highly interactive piece that gives kids lots of practice. Next slide. And then another thing we wanted to tell you about that happened this year at Stevenson is we had a college and career-ready month during the month of January. So in January, we showcased pathways from school to future careers for our scholars. The picture on the right, we sent Puppy and Snail. Those are the mascots that are associated with our social skills curriculum. We sent them with our school counselor and our video team to Dunwoody College, the University of Minnesota, and Minneapolis College. Then we interviewed students and teachers at the college and brought that information back to share with our students during our Monday morning broadcast. Next slide. These are some of the activities that we had going on during the month of January. They were careers focused and showcased during our morning announcements, classroom lessons, morning meeting prompts that dealt with colleges and careers. We played classroom career bingo as a classroom during the month, included in our weekly broadcasts, like I said, with the college visits and the spotlight on careers. We also showcased or focused on a few of our parents and let them get in on the fun. And then we had a career pathway display set up. Each staff member had their college pennant and swag hanging from their classrooms. And then, as the picture in the middle shows, we had a career dress-up day to culminate the event. It was a, it was a lot of fun, and I do think the modeling is great for our kids to be exposed to. And then the next slide shows we were going to bring our Lego Junior team to you. We have two Lego Junior teams, after-school teams, this year, and the teams wanted to bring the robots up because they had programmed their robots and had built these things, and they really wanted to show you what they could do. But I didn't want to leave them out of the broadcast, so I just wanted to give them the recognition. They, they are looking forward to going on and maybe pursuing that same interest at the middle and high school. The next slide is, we wanted to let you know that we have a science lab that will be starting up this fall with the help of a $25,000 donation we received from someone that cares a lot about our math and science instruction. So we are setting that up. The supplies are coming in for it now, and we'll have that thing up and ready to go next fall. All right. Next slide is part two, distant learning. In March, as everybody knows, life changed, and we are now post-COVID-19. So I wanted, I am so proud, as I'm sure Gailey is at Haze, so proud of her staff, that the hard work and the talent going into distant learning, I just couldn't leave that out of my presentation. So I quickly put together some of these things that are going on here at school. We handed out 227 Chromebooks through a three-week period so that any family that we could connect up with some technology, we went ahead and did that. For families that maybe felt that wasn't the best way for their kids to learn, we also put together some learning packets and are currently delivering hard copies of student work each week to their homes. Next slide. So distant learning starts out just the way here does at school with a morning meeting, and as the slide indicates, they are connecting with their classmates online now. They have time to share, they get the learning plan for the day. It is optional for our students, and as you can see, we get probably about 85% of our students to join that morning meeting because they love that connection that is going on with each other. Next slide is after we, I feel like the, one of the most important parts is to build some fun and connectedness into those meetings. You can see that they recognize birthdays, they do morning prompts such as the one you see in the bottom right corner with all students being on flip grid and recording their responses, and then they're able to play them back for each other. And they seem to really enjoy that communication method. Next slide is a reading lesson that is going on, and in this reading lesson, again, it looks a lot like our instruction here at school. This happens to be, they're studying six different classification of animals in this lesson, and so it starts out with a read aloud that Ms. Mattson is doing. There is a student interactive activity where students go on to show their level of understanding, and Ms. Mattson can watch them do the activity as they place these classification materials and match them up. And then she culminates it with a brain break, and a brain break is really just a breathing or a focus exercise that they include in the parts of the day. So classification happens to be a science standard, and you can see it's interdisciplinary in the way they're teaching it. These classifications that they are doing through a series of six days of different classification methods will go into their information as part of their animal report that they are putting together, and it just so happens they started that animal report today. And so they will be presenting their animal reports to their teachers in early June. Next slide is an example of math, and this happens to be a two-digit second-grade lesson. Abby is, or Ms. Jensen is presenting the lesson. Students are following along, and they're doing practice problems, and then she checks in on them with checking on their methods, and they get a chance to explain how they did the work. And in the bottom right-hand corner, brain breaks are also built into these lessons, and brain breaks are short mental breaks designed to help students, again, stay focused and attend to the lesson or the task at hand. The brain breaks carry oxygen to the brain, so they generally involve some movement. If we go to the next slide, we can hear Leona's. Dave, if you want to cue up Leona, she, she will explain how she arrived at the answer for her two-digit subtraction problem.
I think the answer is 39 because I, because I took away 54 from 93, and I, I drew math drawing, and then I, I took away, I took away six from, instead of 50, because I needed to ungroup a 10 stick because I couldn't take four away from three because I didn't have enough. So I ungrouped, and then I crossed off four, and then, and then I had nine left, so I drew a nine, and then, and then I took away some from the 10 sticks, and then I counted 10, 20, 30, so I got 30, and 30 plus nine equals 39.
And what is great about that is if you go on and you watch Ms. Jensen do the lesson, she's giving feedback to kids about their responses, and they're also able to learn from each other by watching each other's presentation. Next slide, Dave, is just optional activities that are included with kids during their day, and this is truly a team effort here at Stevenson in that our reading specialists, our EL team, and our specialists are all taking part in creating these optional activities for kids that they can go at at their own speed. And so it really is a wonderful team effort, and I just, there's so much work that goes into creating videos and the time involved. It's truly remarkable. I generally bop in on one lesson a day so I have access to all the classrooms, and I'm able to touch base with kids, teachers, and just kind of watch all the magic happen. And like, I hope you, you can see how excited I am of how hard people are working at this. And then the last slide, ever since I came to Stevenson, one of the first things I wanted to do was create a student broadcast, and I know And I know those of you that are, are parents out there, um, probably know about this. But uh, the purpose, I think it really gives us a sense of community. We kick this off every Monday. Um, does a whole lot. It um, it provides students the chance to lead, it, it builds a community here. And um, we have fun with it. So I'll just um, finish with our, a few clips from our broadcast and give you a little feel for one of the things that this looks, that this uh, encompasses. What I have done is my, uh, most of my kids understand that I am retiring. So they think I am traveling the US right now. I have a green screen in my office and so every week I come to them from some parts of the United States. And uh, my teachers are telling me that they truly think that I'm in these locations that I'm filming from. So we'll finish with the broadcast here.
Hi Stevenson Elementary!
Hey Stevenson Elementary!
You know where we are? Bossler and I have decided that we are going to come, we're going to travel the United States.
Alright, let's spin for first grade. We've got so many people working super hard in first grade. Let's see who is our integrity winner this week.
Today is a new day. I will make our school better. I challenge myself to do my best. I may make mistakes, but I will learn from them because I care.
Thank you.
You sure make learning look fun. Thank you for that great report. Is, are there any board members who would like to uh, have any questions or like to share anything with professor, or professor, Principal Bossler?
Thornton here. I do. Well, Mr. Bossler, it, it, you will truly, truly be missed. Um, miss seeing you um, as much as I used to. But you're, you're always took, that took the time, no matter how busy you were. I, I'm a, you know, my daughter did the loop program and I loved it because she, she didn't have that anxiety next year of who the teacher was gonna be. The teacher knew her, she knew the kids and the teacher. So it was just a great fit and less anxiety, of course, for me. You know, knowing what to expect. So um, just know that you will greatly be, be missed and I wish you well. You greatly deserve it.
Thanks Carol.
And I, um, this is Donna. I had already told you Daryl how much I appreciated. All four of my boys have gone through school with you as the principal. And I was just amazed you were able to keep them all straight. You always address the kids by their name. Um, they were always impressed with that. I also had multiple kids do the loop, which was amazing because at the beginning of the school year, it wasn't like starting over. It was almost like starting halfway through. They were just able to pick up right where they left off. So that was just, I mean, one of your legacies for sure, but you will truly be missed.
Thanks Donna.
Adam here. And Mr. Bossler, I can say your scholars have already started practicing politics and big picture events. So how one of the students who was featured in the video was on my literature campaign when I was running for a school board. And she was one of my best advisors. So, and she's still good, I think. So that shows you how engaged you are with the community and how you are crea- I mean uh, planting seeds of leadership in our children. And thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Adam.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, repeating all of that, we picked the Fridley School District when Dylan was initially open enrolled because we wandered in and I just said, "Tell me about your school." And you were so welcoming and so kind. And when Dylan was first starting school, he was really upset because he thought kindergarten was at the U of M with me. And so he wanted nothing to do with this other building until he came in and met you in the front office. So it was very easy to bring my one and only baby boy to school because I knew that he would be safe and well cared for.
Thank you. Um, yeah, you know, I'll just finish by saying um, y- you guys, I think, I hope you feel that um, y- you're not my parents, you're my friends. I, I leave here with so many friends that uh, uh, it's, it's a great job because of uh, all the friendships that I've formed and partnerships I've formed with you guys. So thank you, very kind.
And Daryl, you know, I love you from the bottom of my heart. And um, you have left your legacy and you have uh, given your life, given your 14 years of your life to Fridley. And we thank you. Thank you so much. So thanks for uh, impacting so many kids' lives in a positive way.
Thank you, Dr. Heil.
And now at the other end of the spectrum, we have Principal Gaily Iverson from Haze, who is giving her first report on Haze Elementary. So um, welcome Gaily. And we look forward to hearing about all the good things at Haze.
Thank you so much. Uh, as you said, I'm Gaily Iverson, principal at Haze. And I am just so thankful to be in front of all of you today. Uh, I can tell you that this year has come with many, many adventures. And um, the great thing about that is it allows me to be challenged and continue to keep learning right alongside all of my hardworking colleagues and students. And I absolutely just am so thankful for that. When I think about this year, it really was a year of forming, right? Forming relationships with community members, forming relationships with staff, forming relationships with school board members, forming relationships with our students, our most precious of gems. Um, forming relationships with our parents and all of those different stakeholders that really go into making a system great. And in doing that, there's growing pains. Especially when I am following in the footsteps of another amazing leader, Mr. P, who absolutely was loved and adored. So in this year, I had the unique challenge of starting something new and also very much so honoring the past. And with doing that, I have been very fortunate to really get to know staff and be able to identify strengths within the systems that we have to bring us all together. So I do want to make sure that I let you know, two members of the core leadership team are with me on this call today. Ms. Cara Klaget, our instructional leader and reading coach, and Ms. Kirsten Wickman, our IB coordinator and district level reading coach. I did not feel that it was right to present in front of you without them being acknowledged as well. They have stood by my side this year and helped us through every single learning and growing pain and celebration and success. And they deserve to have that acknowledgement in front of all of you. So Cara and Kirsten, thank you for helping this year be great. Mr. Bossler, I want to also thank you as my colleague, my first official principal colleague. Um, you have been a mentor to me. You have been somebody that I can pick up the phone and call in a moment's notice. And you have given me the gift of understanding how to be grounded in situations that are harder and also to enjoy the simple things that come with this job. So thank you for that. I also want to thank Dr. Heil and all of you as school board members who have given me grace this year in my learning, a new system, and really standing by my side, cheering me on and celebrating with me when we've had successes. So with that being said, I want to uh, really kind of help you see all that we have accomplished this year. Um, we have put together a video for you that really uh, is two chapters. Uh, as Mr. Bossler had talked about, chapter one of this school year of in-person and chapter two, uh, pandemic chapter, uh, where we've really had to overnight change how we do business without losing sight of connection, loving and committing to the excellence of Fridley Public School Systems around high achievement and loving our kids. And I'm really, really excited to show you this video. It is a little bit longer, so I want you to just get comfortable because it's about 11 minutes long. But I think that it will really highlight all that has gone into this year and really help give you a picture into our life at Haze. So with that, Mr. Weber, when you're ready.
Hello, this is Haze Elementary School. It's a great school to come to.
We are kind, safe, responsible, too.
We're kind, safe, responsible.
Let's be Abdo.
Haze is a school and love is the tool. With friends by our side, we show good pride. We are kind, safe, responsible, too. We think about our world with another attitude. We create and are learning so we can lead the way. Haze is contactless every single day. Boom!
Hey! I hope you guys enjoyed. This is our Haze scholar rap with the beat boxer, Abdo. And these are our vocalists.
Me Humphrey or no?
Me Janelli.
I'm Ellen.
And I'm Belina Langston.
And we are the Haze Boomers.
Boom!
Be cooperative, be safe and be kind.
So I just want to say, let's keep it going, Haze draft. I'm so proud of you and everything that I see every day. And I just can't wait to see our caring ripple continue.
I like to be an enquirer because you learn a lot of things and I like to.
Good morning, Haze draft scholars. A very happy, chilling Wednesday to you.
This is Langston Anadipa with your morning announcement.
I see a van. Can you put S? Where does S go? Good job!
Hi, Haze scholars, it's Ms. Iverson. I just wanted to say have a wonderful spring break over the next uh, week. I hope that you worked hard on your choice boards last week and I look forward to seeing you soon. Love to you all. Bye!
Take a good look in the mirror. Tell me who, who do you see? Keep your head up. Reflect on who you are. Yeah, that's you.
Hello, Haze scholars. I'm so happy to see you. We are going to do an art walk together today. Um, it was something we meant to do at school, but now we're doing it online. Ready, set, go! So we're going to start with a little warm-up for your singing voice. And I'm hoping that yes, you will indeed join us um, and actually sing along. That's the hope and the goal, um, to have a little bit of community and joining together. So let's get your breathing ready to go first. This is called a Hobermann sphere, a breathing ball. Um, but all you're gonna do is you're gonna breathe in while I move it out. Cool, huh? And then breathe out when I move it in. This is another echo song, which means I sing it, then you sing it back, okay? One of these days, look up and see a wise old owl sitting in a tree.
It was hard to use it with my brother. So we got a Chromebook from school, so I did all my work on there.
Hi, I want to give my daughter's third grade teacher, Mrs. Fisher, a shout out. Mrs. Fisher has been amazing. She's connected with our daughter and she's connected with us. She has looked at the situation as a whole and is ensuring that our daughter is doing well academically, but more importantly, that she is doing well emotionally.
Hi, I'm Emma Carnap, reporting to you live. I'm gonna ask you some questions about distance learning. What are your favorite things and least favorite things about distance learning?
One thing I like about distant learning is I can be able to see my friends and my teacher during our life chat during, on Wednesdays. One thing I don't like about distant learning is I can't see my friends and teacher face to face in the classroom and we can't play, and me and my friends can't play outside in recess during this time.
My favorite part is the math and well, because my teacher's teaching it and it's, and she's really, really good at it. I love it. And my least favorite part is that I don't get to see my classmates that much. And it's really tough on me. But at least I get to see them on Wednesdays and on book club.
My favorite part about distance learning is that I get to hear my teacher's voice and it reminds me of school. But, and the worst part is that uh, I don't actually get to be with my friends and my teachers, so that's sad.
Any ideas to make distance learning better?
Maybe more activities like maybe for, for participation in gym. Maybe if you run outside, play in your backyard, jump on your trampoline, play in your little park, maybe.
So what I think um, would be uh, fun for distance learning, so if you're having a hard time like with money or, I mean, math or reading, like you could like money or something, you could play store and you can figure out how to make change.
It's Emmett Carnop signing off. Have a safe and fun rest of your day.
Hi, I have my sister today here to, to hold my paper. She's my assist. So we're going to answer eighty-five minus fifty-eight. So we're going to put eighty plus five, then fifty plus eight on the others, then we're gonna write the plus in the middle and then the two minuses on the side. That's how you, how you answer eighty-five minus fifty-eight.
We all have had bad days. Something happens and we go home frustrated and upset. In our story, Benji's brother had a bad day. We'll find out why and then we'll learn what happened later to make him feel better. The story is entitled, "Benji, The Bad Day, And Me." The author is Sally Plaw, the illustrator is Ken Min. So sit back and relax, put your ears on, and get ready to read along with Mr. G. Peace is being different, feeling good about yourself and helping others. The world is a better place because of.
Woof, woof. I miss Hayes so much. I can't wait to go back to school. Love you, everyone. Mwah. So with that, that was a little picture into our world over the last year, this academic school year. And I know that for each of you, it probably brings you that same joy that it brings to me to see their little faces um, in all of their scholarly ways, really celebrating all the great things that happen at our building each day. So I really hope that you had um, enjoyed that and um, I really thank you for your dedication to our students.
Ms. Iverson, it's Jake.
Yeah.
I don't really appreciate that presentation.
Really?
It was, I, I knew it was coming with Emmett being the broadcaster and I was completely surprised, but I had a feeling it was coming and he came over and he was pretty pumped and uh, thank you. It was really cool.
Yeah, he was a star. I loved it.
I can't lie, I did text Jake's wife during that and went, OMG, that is adorable.
And that's why I was off the screen because I had a little, little crowd behind me, but um, all good things, I'm Gaily. Your, your team and you have done a fabulous job. Um, you've extended my expectation. I know my, my experience with Ms. Armstrong isn't unique, um, but she's my experience and, and obviously our specialist. She's knocked it out. You guys have knocked it out of the park. There's really, I, I, you know what words? As some of my board members know, something completely rare. So, thank you from the bottom, thank you from the bottom of your heart and um, just please, please extend my gratitude to your entire staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that fun presentation. It's fun to see, see the kids in action. Now we'll move on to the business action items portion of the meeting. Um, first up, we have a motion, I invite a motion for approval of the 2019 through 2021 Fridley Association of School Principals Agreement. Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the principals agreement?
So moved by Stark.
Carnop second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Carnop. We will vote by roll call. Uh, please say your last name and yes or no. A- Adam.
Adam, yes.
Delvo, yes. Purido?
Purido, yes.
Uh, Carnop?
Carnop, yes.
Stark?
Stark, yes.
Thornton?
Thornton, yes.
Motion carried. Next up, we have approval of the second reading of adoption of policies. We reviewed these in a first reading in the last month, April, board meeting. The, I will entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the adoption of policies, Policy 421, gifts to employees and school board members, Policy 510, school activities, Policy 703, annual audit, and Policy 820, disposition of obsolete equipment. Do I have a motion to adopt the second reading of these policies?
Motion by Purido.
Motion by Purido.
Second by Adam.
Motion by Purido, second by Adam. We will do the vote by roll call. Please say yes or no and your last name. Adam.
Adam, yes.
Delvo, yes. Purido?
Purido, yes.
Purido, yes.
Carnop?
Carnop, yes.
Stark?
Stark, yes.
Thornton?
Thornton, yes.
Uh, motion carried, second readings adopted. Next, we have a motion for approval of the school board meeting calendar for 2020 and 2021. Uh, this calendar will begin on July 1st of 2020 and go through June 30th of 2021. So these will all be posted meetings. The board, starting in July, has added an additional work session per month. So the first Tuesday of every month will be a work session and the work session, board meeting and public um, forum portion of the school board meeting will be held on the third Tuesday of the month as in years past. Um, so option A is what the board, board appro- approved. Do I have a motion to accept option A as the school board meeting calendar for 2020, 2021?
Motion to approve a, Purido.
Second by Stark.
Motion by Purido, second by Stark. We'll do the vote by roll call. Adam?
Adam, yes.
Delvo, yes. Purido?
Purido, yes.
Purido, yes.
Carnop?
Carnop, yes.
Stark?
Stark, yes.
Thornton?
Thornton, yes.
Motion carried. Uh, the meetings will now be posted. Over the next month, they'll be posted for the upcoming year. Next, we have gifts, uh, excuse me, I gotta scroll down. We already did that. Um, now we have the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda is uh, approval of routine action items, including the minutes of the regular school board meeting, closed session and work session held on April 21st, 2020, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leave of absence, terminations, resignations, retirements, and MOU for probationary teachers. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Carnop motion.
Do I have a second?
Second by Adam.
So I had, I believe Carnop made the motion with a second by Adam. We'll do the vote by roll call. Uh, Adam?
Adam, yes.
Delvo, yes. Purido?
Yes, Purido.
Stark?
Yes, Stark.
Carnop?
Carnop, yes.
Thornton?
Thornton, yes.
Motion carried. Now, uh, this is the time when we do our, our reports from school board members and we have uh, up first, Dr. Kim Heil on the Association of Metropolitan School Districts.
Thank you, Chairs, uh, Delvo and the school board. Um, at the May 1st AMSD meeting, we had a presentation by Dr. Heather Mueller, who's the Deputy Commissioner of MDE. And basically, she has uh, been one of the co-leads around the Distance Learning Plan from the Minnesota Department of Education. She basically reviewed uh, data that has been collected by uh, MDE and one of those areas in which they're collecting surrounds the area of technology needs for school districts. And so MDE is tracking that information and so districts did need to report in uh, the number of devices that they still needed to be able to give students uh, the technology they needed as well as the number of students who still needed broadband as well. So with that information, they're working with private partners and how to support students and school districts in distance learning with their technology needs. She also shared food being distributed statewide from school districts and this was back on May 1st. So from that time period, she has said that there had been 5.6 million meals distributed by school districts at that time. And she commented as well on summer programming and how they're working close with the Public Health Department and how best to do that well. There was a short uh, forecast given, uh, a funding forecast given and they had mentioned that the state uh, outlook um, uh, as of for April had lost a hundred and three million dollars in general revenue. So that's the general update for AMSD for May 1st.
Thank you, Dr. Heil. Uh, next up is uh, excuse me, um, next up is the 96, Northeast Metro 916. Uh, we approved at this meeting the uh, uh, proposed budget for the 2020-21 school year and revisions to the 1920 uh, school year. The budget is very conservative. There are some outliers due to COVID-19, as you can imagine. Uh, one being enrollment, determining what the fall is going to look like and whether or not some families will send their, their students back to school. Um, and second is federal funding, whether or not the district will be reimbursed for some of the costs that they've incurred as a result of COVID-19 adjustments. Um, uh, approved uh, long-term facilities maintenance um, resolution that allows member districts to contribute levy dollars to Northeast Metro 916's long-term um, levy. And last, they um, purchased, were able to purchase early student computers that uh, were budgeted for the fall and able to purchase them early so that it was already a budgeted expense so that they can set up their summer school students with technology right away because their summer school starts a couple of days after their school year ends. And so there, there was not time to get devices in the hands of people who would be doing summer school because it's not always the same kids um, in their district that do that. So um, that was all we had for District 916. I believe those were all the, all the uh, committee reports for this month. Important future school board dates, AMSD Board Meeting, May 22nd at 7:00 AM at Cora Education Center. Fridley High School graduation, virtually same date, June 4th, 2020. Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting, June 3rd at 6:00 PM at the Bel Air School. That will be held virtually. Uh, and the Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting on June 16th, work session at 5:30, open forum at 7:00, business meeting at 7:30, and that will also be held virtually. With that, that's all we have for tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn by Stark.
Second by Purido.
Motion by Stark, second by Purido. We'll vote by roll call. Adam?
Adam, yes.
Delvo, yes. Purido?
Purido, yes.
Carnop?
Carnop, yes.
Stark?
Stark, yes.
Thornton?
Thornton, yes.
Motion uh, carried and meeting is adjourned at 8:42 PM. Thank you.